Okay. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes from the March 21st meeting of the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Any comments or redactions or edits needed? If not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes, please?
Motion to accept the minutes?
Motion by Montos.
Second.
Second by Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll read our little, my intro here. Good evening. Welcome to the May 16th meeting of the City of Beacon Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jordan Howgan. I am the chairman of this board. Joining me are the rest of the members of the board. We also have our city staff, including Bruce Flower, the building inspector, our new attorney, and Amanda, our zoning board secretary. All applications that are being considered tonight will be linked to the city website. And there's a link to the rules and procedures also on the website as well. And I'd like to take a minute to explain the board's procedures. We'll hear each application as it is noticed on the agenda. So we'll hear the first application first, obviously, and the second application second. And then we'll open the floor to the public for comment. If you wish to comment, please step up to the podium and talk into the mic. That's something that people commonly forget to do. Please state your name and address for the record so Amanda can take that down. We ask you to speak to the different factors. So we often, zoning is a balancing test, at least for the variances that are on tonight. If you speak to those factors, which we often talk about, it is a more productive meeting for us and for you. And those comments are, well, those factors are what we can consider. One thing also that is important, we have a full board here tonight, but I always like to state that there needs to be a majority vote of what can be a quorum. A quorum is three, so you need three votes to pass. So tonight we have five members, so you have the ability to get five votes. So you have the maximum, the maximum board here. If there was only three of us, you would need all of us. So you have, you can get two noes and still pass. That's, that's my opening for this month. All right. So can I, can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number one?
Motion.
Motion by Judy.
Second.
Second by Montos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number one. Please proceed. Good evening, Ariah.
Good evening. Ariah Segal, representing the owner who's here tonight, in case you have any questions for her. So the property is at Five Willow Street. It's in the T zoning district. And the application is to renovate the existing two-story garage to create another third dwelling unit on the property. We're thinking about doing it as an accessory apartment, but the existing house is a two-family, so that's, that's not allowed there. The T zoning district allows for a number of residential types, single-family, two-family, multifamily. So, you know, the fact that it's, the application's asking for a third dwelling unit sort of fits into that T zoning district. So in order to do that, there's an existing garage there. It's in pretty dilapidated shape, so, you know, part of the project is to fix that up.
It's got a big picture window on the second floor, right?
So, but there's, there's a few variances that we would need in order to allow that building to be fixed up and made into another dwelling unit. So there's, the first one is a variance for the requirement of having more than one main building on the lot. There's also some small setback variances where there's, you know, because again, it's an existing building, it's close to the property lines, so there's a side yard and a rear yard variance request. And then for the off-street parking, technically, six spaces are required. The way the family is going to use this, they don't think they need more than three. Although, in the future, six could be made to fit there if necessary, but, you know, just, instead of paving the whole yard and taking all the grass away, that, they're asking for three parking spaces. So that's generally what the, what the request is. And then, you know, we, we think that it fits into the criteria for the variances. It's not significant, you know, it's an improvement of an existing situation. It's, you know, we don't believe it changes the character of the neighborhood. It doesn't have any ill effects on any of the other properties, so, you know, we think it's a pretty good fit and should be an improvement in general. So that's pretty much a summary of, you know, what we're asking for.
You want to say anything else, or?
Sure, I can take.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Kristen Battersby. I live at Five Willow Street. Just to give you a little background about the rehab of the barn, I lived in that house. It's my grandmother's house, so I lived there from the ages of 10 to 13. So the rehab is absolutely personal to me. That barn has been dilapidated since I was growing up there. We reinforced it, I think, about 10 years back. And renting out the property has given us the means to be able to rehab that barn now. So, let's see. I'm excited to rehab the barn and have it be an apartment. I don't believe we're able to ever have any Airbnbs on the property, which is great, because I want to add to the community of the City of Beacon and create kind of like, like a collective dwelling back there, where we can all share the yard together, make use of the space, and be close to the places on Main Street in which we all would work ideally. And then potentially in the future, as my husband and I continue to live in the space, it could be a building for my parents to move in with us also, so we could continue to take care of them and like live together as they get older and older. And either way, if you've ever walked by that barn, you'll know that it's completely falling apart. And I've talked to a couple of the neighbors who seem very excited that the barn will be rehabilitated and that it will be adding to the community. And to echo what Ariah said about the parking spaces, we do believe that three should be enough for the time being. We do have a large bush up in the front. We could, if necessary, tear that away and make room for some extra parking. But we've had, I believe, four adults on the property for two years, and we've never needed more than two vehicles in the driveway. So that was my thought. Thank you very much for having me.
Can I ask you a question? Who currently lives in the two-family?
It's my husband, my sister and I, and we have a downstairs tenant, but he just left five days ago.
But you intend to rent in the future so there'd be still two units?
Correct, yes.
So the intention is to have, in theory, three units. Your, what is yours, the other unit in the main building, and then the, the new unit in the back, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So Bruce, I just have some questions for you, and Susan, I want to go back to you. What is this structure currently zoned for?
So the prop, well, the property is zoned, it's within the transitional zone, so it's, I guess, the new zone that they had created between Central Main Street and the, you know, residential districts to the north.
So I guess a better way to ask the question is, what use is permitted? So let's say they wanted to rehabilitate the use that is allowed currently, but what is the current non-conforming use of that structure?
So actually, there could be a combination, if they were to take that building out, it'd be, it would be a combination of commercial, like professional office and residential. It could be multifamily. Obviously, one and two-family homes are allowed within that zone. Without looking at the table, there's probably a couple more that I'm forgetting.
Are one and two-family additional homes allowed in that zone on a lot already containing a two-family zone?
So the issue is that you're allowed to have multifamily.
Which is already exists.
Right, which would have to be all within one structure. What they're proposing is, originally it was proposed as an accessory structure, accessory dwelling unit. But the problem is with that is it's a two-family home. So accessory dwelling units were only allowed in.
Single families.
Single families. So with this case, I guess it was proposed to create a separate primary dwelling unit, so, on the lot. So there is a section within the zoning codes that you're allowed to only have one primary dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then everything else would be considered accessory to that. This one would be considered, I guess, another primary dwelling unit as a single-family home.
I think that's my basic question, is why is this not a use variance, since really what's being addressed is the current ADU law, which would not permit an accessory dwelling unit with a two-family home, in which case they would need a use variance as opposed to an area variance. It's, I mean, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. It's still an accessory dwelling unit.
Yes. Technically, it could be considered that. I didn't, I didn't propose it this way. It was proposed, but the, but yeah, originally it was proposed to the, it actually went to the planning board originally, and then they.
Oh, the planning board decided to do it this way? The planning board thought, the planning board thought it was a good idea to do it this way?
Well, the planning board didn't, didn't, they didn't review the application.
They didn't review the application?
No, no.
Yeah, they, they reviewed the initial one, when we were looking at it as an accessory, but then, you know, I think in consultation with the.
Right.
City attorney and Bruce, it seemed like the best way to handle it was getting the variance for the second main dwelling unit. And I understand the question about the use, but, but the use is permitted.
For a single-family home?
Well, but, but that zone also permits two-family and multifamily. So it's more about how it's configured, which is why I believe it was.
Area.
Thought of as an area variance.
If, yeah. The other, I think the other reason it was proposed this way was because if you connected the two structures together.
Mm-hmm.
It would become a multifamily home. At the same time, multifamily homes are allowed within a transitional zone.
So they could put an addition onto the house if they so desired?
Yes, they could. They could, based, and again, it's based upon a lot size, but I.
If they connected it, would they need a, a variance?
If they connected the two together, yes, they would still need the variance for the setbacks.
In lockup, probably.
Yes, probably for that also.
Yeah. Do we have any precedence of this anywhere else in the city?
None that I know of. This is, again, I've only been here a short time, but from what I've kind of gone through, I haven't seen anything similar to this. Actually, I have to, I have to retract it. There is one similar property on Ackerman Street. It has a two-family in the front of the property and a single-family to the back of the property, which is all on one lot. It was a pre-existing non-conforming. It's been there since prior to, well, prior to the 60s.
Okay. Can, I'm sorry, can you explain the parking spaces for me again? I just didn't follow on that.
Oh, well, I mean, the requirement is two spaces per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
That they're asking for basically one space per dwelling unit because it, you know, I mean, just to avoid the paving, you know, all that front area.
Got it.
That's on the drawing there. And they, based on their experience, it's worked fine that way.
Got it. So that's, that's an area variance, but the fundamental question is really a use variance. Isn't that what we're saying? That, that we're talking about a second single-family home on the property, and that's not an area variance, that's a use variance?
Well, if I can opine on this, it's, it's an area variance because, as Bruce mentioned, there is, the 223-12A says that you can only have one main building per lot. If you want to have a second main building, regardless of what the use is, you need a variance from that section. To allow a second main building is an area variance in and of itself. Everything here is an area variance. What you would need a use variance for would be if there was a use not in the transition district, not in the T district, you would need a use variance to say, you know, if you wanted to build a baseball stadium in the backyard, for example, you need a use variance to put, to put a baseball stadium there. These are permitted uses, one-family, two-family, multifamily. So it takes us into the area variance analysis of, it's a separate building. If it was connected, it's different. Here, there's not one building that's accessory to the other. If it was accessory to it, that's a different story. You don't need a variance from this. You would still need area variances for the setbacks. You would still need, if you were to connect the buildings, like someone asked, you need an area variance because there's work going on in the setback. So that's how it's been sort of packaged. It's, it's just sort of the existing conditions that have led to, to this point.
What I don't understand is which zoning law takes precedence? The one main building on a lot or the ADU law they passed, which restricts ADU laws to single-family homes?
Well, this, this.
Because this just seems to me like a workaround around that law.
The accessory dwelling unit, this just does not qualify for it because it's, it's a two-family.
Right.
It's up to the board to determine how they want to view this application. If you guys have, you know, objections or concerns, you can ask those questions and get the answers. There's not necessarily one law that takes precedence over the other. It's just the situation that because they're separate, it's, it's, the way to do this is an area variance. If you were to convert this to anything, even if it wasn't a dwelling unit, if it was another permitted use, permitted principal use on the property, you would still need this area variance to allow more than one building. If it was an accessory use, that's different, because you can have accessory uses accessory to the main building.
So for example, an art studio or something?
I don't want to opine onto what's permitted, but yeah, if it was a permitted principal use, that wasn't a dwelling unit, if it was an art studio, for example, let's say, I'm not making any representation as to that being permitted in the T district, you would still need the area variance to allow more than one main building, more than one principal use.
Because if this was under the ADU law, they wouldn't need the setback variances because it's a pre-existing structure built before, I don't remember what the specific date is. They would need one because it's 40 square feet larger than the permitted.
Size.
Size. And they would need a parking variance, but it would be for one less parking spot.
And to the, if any work was done, you would still need the area variance to do work within that setback, even though it's non-conforming. Once you do work within the non-conforming setback, it's now new. If the barn was built in 1900, for example. Any work to renovate now, even if it's within the footprint, that's a foot away from the setback, that's new work. That's 2023 work, so you would need the area variance.
I thought in the ADU law, it was, if it was a pre-existing building that didn't conform to the setbacks, that was, that could be allowed by the planning board, actually.
I would have to look further into the ADU law on that respect. I, I don't want to make a representation as to knowing it by heart right now, but I could, I could look further into that. Again, if we have concerns, we can ask questions, and then we can push it back another month if you guys decide to go that way. It's really a determination of getting the information from the architect and the representative here and sort of seeing how you guys feel at that point.
So reiterate to me again, the rationale for wanting this, the justification, is there a financial hardship, or what's the, what's the reasoning for this?
Yeah, I mean, it's partly to, to take care of that, you know, sort of eyesore building on the property. I mean, I'm sure that, that part of it is a financial, you know, so they can, instead of having that falling apart building there, they can have it generate something and/or, you know, these for the family later on. But really, it's just, you know, making use of that additional structure. And the, the way that it's been put together was, you know, I mean, like I said, we did go in with the accessory dwelling originally, and then after that was reviewed by your predecessor, she, she thought that the best way to handle it was to, you know, to, to treat it as another main building and ask for these variances.
I'm hearing eyesore, not hearing financial hardship.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a combination of reasons.
What is the financial hardship?
Well, to do the repairs.
I mean, financial hardship would be money you're putting out, not potential to come in after a renovation.
Right. I mean, it, you know, if, if it stays there, it would probably have to be demolished eventually, and then, you know, I mean, right, right now, it has some potential. But, you know, I think, I think there's a variety of reasons why they want to keep working on it.
So the question that I was trying to ask before, but I don't think I did, and Bruce or George, feel free to answer, is by right, what could be done with the structure currently without, without.
Yeah.
The first variance?
I mean, they can, they could repair what's there, and then it can, again, be used as a barn, you know, or a garage for storage.
So the city considers it a barn slash garage?
Yeah.
And so they.
So it could still be, it could still be used for that.
By right.
By right, yes.
And, and to go further, I'm looking at the table of permitted uses. Permitted accessory uses in the T district include accessory apartment, private tennis court or pool, home occupation or artist's studio, which was the example given before, a parking structure with a special permit, garden, roof garden or greenhouse, solar collectors. Those are listed as permitted accessory uses.
Right, but those would all need variances, so.
Those would, those would need variances in terms of setbacks, but in terms of the first variance being sought for more than one main building, they would not, because now this is accessory, the two, the two-family dwelling unit would be the main building, and this would be accessory to the main building.
But there's not, there's no way to have an accessory to a two-family, is that correct?
As an accessory dwelling unit, this, I believe. And this can't be multifamily because multifamily has to be attached. So that's sort of, it's a, it's a path that curves along, but those are the connections.
So using it within its permitted, we wouldn't have variance one or variance four in front of us?
What was that? I'm sorry?
We would not have variance one or four if.
If the use wasn't for living or dwelling.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, arguably, I'm not sure about four. With parking, I'd have to look more into it, but really, number one, correct. If it was an accessory use, unless there's something that limits accessory uses, which I'm not aware of, you wouldn't need the first one. But because it's a principal use, you're having two principal uses, so you need more than one quote-unquote "main" building. That's what number one is about.
Could you read the number one point of the uses of accessory units? Because it said accessory dwelling unit, didn't it?
Accessory apartment?
Yeah, accessory apartment.
Yeah, accessory apartment, but these are all, I believe they, when it comes to accessory dwelling units, I believe, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, they have to be connected? Is that what the case is?
No, they, well, so an accessory dwelling unit would, it's, it's allowed on the property, but it's only for a one-family house.
And this is a two-family.
It's not allowed for a two-family house.
Yes.
Also, accessory apartments would have to go in front of, if they're detached and not part of the main structure, those have to go to the planning board for approval before I can issue a permit. So that's.
But this says, though, that accessory apartment is one of the allowed uses. It's the accessory dwelling unit statute, regulation says.
It would be.
You can't have an accessory dwelling unit, quote-unquote, with a duplex as the primary building, but this says one of the acceptable uses.
Correct, yeah.
Is a accessory dwelling.
So two things can be true, right? So if this was a single-family home.
Yeah.
Then this would be in front of the planning board, right?
Yes, correct.
But it is not. It's a two-family home, so they need a variance from the zoning law to allow a second main building.
Yeah.
So, you know, if it was a single-family home, it would be an accessory.
Yeah.
But the, the primary is not a single-family home, and it's a two-family home, then it becomes a variance request as opposed to an application to the planning board for an exception to.
So what we're being asked, what we're being asked by the owner is to allow a second single fam, a second dwelling unit that is not attached to the first one.
Correct.
And that doesn't seem to be actually in either of the paths. It's, it's not clear it's possible here because it'd have to be attached to be a multifamily unit.
Right, to be considered.
And in the ADU law, it, it can't, it could be an accessory dwelling unit if it's a duplex.
Correct.
Which is, which is what they're seeking a variance from.
Right.
So they're, they're coming to us to appeal.
Right. So we can't give the variance to the ADU law, but we can give it to the tenant.
That's, that was my question. Why can't we give them the variance for, for the accessory dwelling? No, you can't do it that way.
Because it would have to be a use variance, not an area variance, and it would be harder to get.
These would be, yeah.
That would make it a use.
No, it still wouldn't make it a use variance, because the use, the use is dwelling, which is permitted.
Oh, we'd be changing to the zoning.
Right?
But because only single-family homes are allowed to have the ADUs, it would have to be a use variance to allow an accessory dwelling, because it's a different use than is allowed for a two-family home.
Yeah, to the extent that if, if it was asking to be an accessory dwelling unit, you know, again, we would look further into the path. Again, I don't want to tie myself to any representation now, but my initial instinct is that that would be a use, because as you stated, you are asking for a use that's different than what's permitted. The accessory dwelling unit is a use. If it was an accessory dwelling unit, but with, you know, the smaller footprint or larger footprint, whatever, then we're into area variance, but you still need to be able to get to the accessory dwelling unit, which is a use. This is a complicated situation, obviously. The, our firm did analysis, my predecessors have done analysis on this, and this was the way that we found, the code just makes sense this way. It's a twisty-turvy way. And Ariah, I believe you've spoken with Drew in the past, and, you know, you and I had some conversations about correcting some, some things on the drawing, so that's how we are here today. But again, if you guys have any questions or issues, this is a time to, this is a perfect time to get them out. Any questions about the factors as well, remember the five factors for the area variance to consider, because these are all area variances, so.
Maybe we should go through them?
Not yet, I have another question.
I do, I do too. I have a question.
Why not turn the two-family house into a three-family house and solve our need?
Oh, and, and instead of doing the other, I, I think it's just not big enough to get another unit in there? That, that would make sense.
Addition to the existing two-family?
Oh, oh, a, a physical addition onto it, you mean?
Yeah. Seems like you have the space.
Um, yeah, I mean, we didn't look at that, and I didn't look at that for a lot of coverage, you know, again, because that existing building is there, and we're trying to make use of that.
My question is, will it always be owner-occupied?
Uh, yeah. It's supposed to always be owner-occupied, yeah.
But you can't guarantee that in perpetuity.
The, the, the main house is owner-occupied.
But there'll be two primaries if we grant this. Which one will be owner-occupied?
Primary number one.
Is that required?
Didn't hear the question.
Is, is, well, this is kind of unprecedented, right, because it doesn't exist, but I guess the question is, if the variance is granted, do one of the structures have to be occupied by the owner of the premises?
How would that be possible? The property doesn't own this case. No, if it was a.
Yeah, I think practically it would be, but it's not, it doesn't have the same requirement as the accessory apartment.
Yeah, the requirement falls under the accessory dwelling law, where that requires the primary, or one of the residents to be occupied by the property owner.
But the way this would be.
So in this case, in this case, it would be very similar to somebody building a, you know, a multifamily home and just renting out all the units.
So they, they would, in theory, they could, by law, by use, or, or by law, by right, could rent all three units, yeah.
Right, in theory, because it's not, it's not an accessory dwelling.
Yep.
Could we make that a condition?
Excuse me?
That one of the units must always be owner-occupied?
The accessory dwelling units, yes, they have to be owner-occupied.
No, the question.
No, it's not an accessory.
The question.
It's two primaries.
Oh, then, no, not in this case.
Can we make a condition?
A condition of the.
Can we make a condition of granting the variance, that one of the units, and we don't care which one it is, but the owner of the property has to remain on that?
That I would...
Yeah, we would have to look further into that in terms of permissible conditions, I would have to look further into that, I don't want to give an answer, again, right at this moment, if that's the route we want to go, we could always finish the discussion today, adjourn for a month, then come back with answers.
But that is not a requirement of a three-unit multifamily...
To be owner-occupied?
Right.
As far as I understand, and Bruce's analysis is correct, the owner-occupied requirement is under ADU, accessory dwelling unit, this is no different than having a multifamily.
One of the things we did years ago was, we were trying to get rid of two-family houses that were complete rentals, because a lot of people from out of town would buy these houses, they didn't care about them, they put in, you know, they didn't care who they put in there, and it really just, it was part of the down, the dark days of Beacon. And we've been, I've been on this board for like fifteen, sixteen years now, so, I mean, it's one of the major things that I think has improved this town, is that we don't allow more multi-unit buildings without owners having to be in them.
Understood, and that's why...
So, that would be my concern.
And the applicant today indicated that this has been their family home, right, so, right now it's owner-occupied, for the near future it might be owner-occupied, again, we can look into permissible conditions, and if that could be a permissible condition, if that's the route we want to go, you know, we'll continue here, determine the route we want to go, and we could always adjourn one more month and come back when we are more comfortable, knowing what conditions we could place and a way that goes forward that works for everyone. Yeah, the applicant is fine with that, if you want to make it a condition.
My overall concern with this whole application is, number one, to me it seems pretty substantial, number two, I don't really hear a, you know, this existing in other parts of the city, right, so a precedence, I'm not hearing a financial hardship, a true financial hardship behind this, and I'm afraid of what the precedence this would set in the city.
And to that extent, you know, with regard to financial hardship and stuff, you know, that's a question that you're more than welcome to ask, I do want to just caution that if it's being analyzed as a factor, the financial factors are more for use variances, not area variances, so I just want to caution to that, not saying that's what's happening. In terms of setting precedent going forward, this lot is sufficiently large to permit this, there's no, of course, precedent going forward is a concern, in order to have something like this, first of all, anyone that comes again in the future would need to get a variance, but also, it's the size of this lot that sort of permits this, a smaller lot would not permit it because of density requirements, and if the lot was smaller and they said, hey, we want to convert this, they would also need a density variance, and that's where you could say, that's where you ask the questions and you make the determination on density, so, it's not necessarily going to open the floodgates, this is a unique circumstance where the lot is sufficiently large by code to have two primary dwelling units or buildings or whatever you want to call it.
And there's an existing structure there, which also is, you know, is a factor, I think it would be a completely different story if nothing existed in that space.
Right, like if they were going to build a new structure...
But the difference is, that structure would be livable with only one, with not meeting the side yard or rear yard setbacks.
Right, so, well...
So, you'd have a livable structure one foot away from the property.
Yeah, potentially, all applications are case by case, obviously, there's no way to determine whether...
That is not rare in Beacon.
Yeah.
A dwelling structure practically right on, it's not a rare thing.
Yeah, the side yard and rear yard setbacks, and I believe that they're, you know, we've gotten some letters about this from the public, that's a byproduct of the fact that the structure currently exists, that's what it is, if it was, if you had another application that said, hey, we want to put a second building on the property, well, when it's a new building, you have the freedom to move it, you have the freedom to require it to be outside of the setbacks and everything. The one-foot and 1.8-foot rear and side yard setbacks is just a byproduct of the fact that the structure exists there for I don't know how long, but it exists and is dilapidated and the applicant wants to refurbish it.
Just a question, in terms of the existing structure, how much is actually going to be, I mean, it says it's going to be renovated, how much of it is actually usable for a renovation and what percentage of the building is actually going to be a new building? It'll be in the same spot, but...
Yeah, I mean, the exterior walls can be repaired and, you know, beefed up so they meet the energy requirements, I mean, it's really about being able to use that skeleton that's there, and that, you know, we can basically use the whole thing and just fill in.
At this point, that framing is still structurally sound?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to look at, you know, if there's pieces that are rotted, they would be replaced, you know, with a similar thing in the right spot, but, yeah, I didn't go through every piece of framing yet.
Just as a restoration, how much is actually going to be restored and how much is going to be just a new bill, and if it's going to be a new bill, why does it have to be in the same spot?
I mean, there's also a little bit of, if it's there, we're allowed to, because it's grandfathered into that spot.
Not with this variance, that's why you need the variances for the side and back setbacks, because it's not grandfathered in.
Well, no, the setbacks, I mean, they're existing setbacks right now.
Right.
The change, because it's being changed to a primary structure and not an accessory structure to properties, I mean, accessory meaning like a shed or a barn, the setbacks change because it's now becoming a dwelling unit.
Right.
And the dwelling unit, you need the increased setback from the property line, so that's the reason for the variance.
Right.
Even though they are, these are existing numbers.
Right, but the fact that it's an existing building doesn't affect that in this type, in the area variance.
Well, it's affecting it by the change of the use.
Right.
Right.
Which...
Right, so, but it's not, yeah, if they took the building down, they could move the building.
Right.
Yeah, but in this case, they're not taking the building down, they're reusing the building. So, it's an adaptive reuse and it's just asking for the, you know, the relief based upon the non-conforming use that's already there.
Right, and that building's been part of the property for decades and, you know, they're interested in reusing it and, you know, just restoring it to what it could be.
Then Bruce, I just had a question about the fourth variance, the parking, if the applicant wanted by right, could they pave the right side of what is now grass into a larger driveway and then not need a variance?
They could, as long as they meet the parking, you know, the parking space requirements, you know, in terms of size, but...
Right, so, I believe there's a tree there, but in theory, they could just pave that and make it parking spaces, and is that, is that correct?
Yes, they would have enough room to, to pave another, to pave another 10 feet to provide more parking, they could do that, but I believe there's a park, I believe in the parking requirements is a five-foot distance from the property line.
But there's 15 feet there, so they could...
But you have 15, correct.
Yeah, we looked at that, and that would work, and that's another, you know, if you want to make a condition, it's just that they'd rather not do the paving if they don't need it.
Well, I wanted to flesh it out, right, so, what I wanted to, I guess, determine or put on the record was, that in theory, your client could do that, but the reason why they're seeking a variance is because they don't necessarily want to reduce the ecological, you know, the grass, so it's either, you know, in theory, right, we give the variance, that particular variance, and there's less parking required, or, you know, you can just say, okay, well, I'm going to pave that and not need the variance by right, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Right, and like I said, we're also, you know, if you wanted to make it a condition that, you know, we could treat it sort of like a land bank parking, we know that we can provide it, but, you know, if we could hold off on providing it unless it became a problem, you know, the way they do with land banking on, you know, larger projects, so...
Right.
There's a placeholder there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just, as long as she's got the area to fit the six cars, right, does she even need that variance?
Well, I guess the question is, right, something that I would weigh, is what is the value of taking six cars or three cars, you know, potentially off the street, more or less than the value of not paving that area of the property, like there's value to that too, in theory, right, ecological value, right?
Absolutely.
So, that's, that's a question for us to determine, right?
The benefit to the applicant versus the harm to the general community.
Sure, well, I mean, you could say there's a benefit to the community by keeping the grass, keeping the grass as well, and then you can't, of course, park on the grass because then you'd be parking on the front yard, is that...
Right, you're not supposed to park in the front yard.
But, you know, what about putting, you know, something over, in order just to get rid of that part of the variance and to keep that it has, needs six spaces, you know, you could do something like, you know, leave the grass there and just put like two little strips of cement for like the tires like they used to do, and you just mow right over it, so you'd have like a grassy driveway type of thing.
Railroad line.
Yeah, yeah.
It's old school.
I'm old.
I guess it's old trick.
And get mowed over that.
Public comment?
I had no...
My grandma's house.
Anyone from the public want to speak on this application? Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, I am Jeffrey Dietz, I am co-owner of Nine Willow Street, the neighbors to the right.
Okay.
We've met before, yeah, and I, we support them, we want, like, it seems like a great thing that it's getting rebuilt, but we do have concerns about the one-foot variance. In the plans, there's exposed foundation where there doesn't really seem to be so now, so it seems like the whole foundation would have to be dug up, and how much work would have to come into our yard, and it doesn't seem to be plumbing and electrical or like a drainage plan in the, in the plans either, so we were just, we just had some concerns about only one foot, and it's also cedar, the plans have cedar siding, so if they ever needed to be painted or to clean the window, they'd have to come onto our property, and there's, and then there would be a window looking into our backyard when there previously wasn't someone like living there, and we now have a small child, so we're a little concerned about like digging in our yard with, you know, if it happens next year, she'll be walking by then, so, I don't know, just wanted to, and we did write a letter, we just wanted to show up in person to say that, you know, we hope that the structure can get rebuilt, we just have a little concerns for our privacy in the, with the one foot.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, you want to just speak to his concerns?
Yeah, we wouldn't be going outside of the footprint that's there now, so, I wasn't clear about the foundation thing that you mentioned, but we're basically would stay right on that footprint and build up from there, or, you know, repair from there, also, I'm not sure, are you on the right, or?
Yeah, we're on the right.
Yeah, there's one small window there, and, you know, I think we could work it out so that there wouldn't be a window there, and there's no window on the back, so...
The drawing referenced skylights.
Yeah.
Where are those, which direction are those facing?
Facing more on the street direction.
So, to the front, okay. So, in the rear there was, which would be not looking at his property, or his property's to the right, but either way, is there a window facing to the rear as well?
No.
No, is there a window facing to the right?
There's one small window which we could eliminate.
Okay.
To alleviate that concern.
Yeah, I believe that window was in a stairwell going up the stairs, it wasn't in a room or anything.
Right, yeah, it's not a required window.
Okay.
So, that's good, right, well, let's take that window out?
Does the board feel as though we need some more time to consider this? Is that the vibe that I'm feeling? Yeah.
Do you feel like we need more time?
That's what I'm asking, the board.
Why were we canceled last month because we didn't...
No, we canceled last month because it was improperly noticed by the applicant.
Oh, by the applicant?
Yes.
How did the applicant, the applicant doesn't notice it, does it?
Well, they filled out the form, sorry, is that correct?
Yeah, there was a...
So, it wasn't our fault, it was your fault that it got canceled last month?
I'm not clear about that. Yeah, the blame, no finger pointing at this point, but it was canceled due to notice issues, I forget exactly which variance it was, but it just sided to an incorrect section, and I believe that Ari, the drawings were cleaned up a little bit, right, to remove any reference to accessory dwelling units, which we've established is not the case here.
Oh, I see.
So, that's why, it was minor but procedurally significant.
Yeah.
It wasn't a substantive change to the plan, it was, but it was a procedurally significant change.
I, okay, great, when I saw noticing, I thought it was us, because that's usually, that's usually us, that, you know...
I guess I'm trying to just get a feel of the board, if the board feels as though we're prepared to move forward and make a decision, a determination on the four variances this evening, or if the board as a whole would like more time to consider the variances as a whole, I'm getting an indication that we have a split on to my right.
I could make a decision tonight.
I can move on tonight too as well.
Could you make a decision?
I think so, yeah.
And to the extent that if it were adjourned, I would also say that the applicant could, Ari, you could revise the drawings to reflect the removal of a window, or if it's the paved driveway, you come back next month, maybe that one variance isn't necessary, right, so, it's not necessarily going to be the case, if it is adjourned a month, it's going to be the same exact application before you, so, that's, you know, the applicant can change in that month as well and come back with something that's better received, worse received, received differently, received same.
I just wonder if we've given clear enough guidance as to what changes would make a difference.
Sure, I think we talked about a lot of things, but I think we can, well, I think I'm hearing the majority of the board feels as though they can make a decision tonight, so, let me, let me read the correspondence into the record, and then we can start to go through the factors of each variance request, and then, again, we don't have to vote until we are prepared to vote, right, so we're, we'll just, we'll continue to move forward now, and if we feel, if that changes or a majority of the board, to minority of the board feels as though to make a decision tonight, we can always adjourn this, or at least put it off, we're going to, we're going to end up closing the public hearing, but we could always adjourn...
Correct.
You know, our, and how long, and just for the, for the record, how long do we have from the time we close the public hearing to make a decision, there's some time requirement, I believe?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but you could close the public hearing, you could continue the public hearing to next month, and, you know, if there's no comments, you can immediately close.
Yeah.
Make a decision at that point, there, you know, there are multiple paths here, you don't necessarily have to make a decision, you know, if the applicant feels more comfortable, they could also request to come back next month with some revisions in a way that it's a different plan and you guys will then see changes, it's up to the applicant as well how they would want to proceed, whether they want to get a decision tonight, I'm not saying that they guide this, but communication between the board and the applicant, the applicant sometimes says...
Sure.
Don't make a decision tonight, we'll come back next month, we'll have some things you'll like, it'll be a different application that you can weigh.
All right, so, let me first ask, Amanda, are there three letters, or are there more than three letters, I have three that I have available to me, I have one from, two from, one, two from two Arnofs, and then, one from Gabrielle Berger, which, okay, yep, and that, is that, and then there's one that just came in?
One that just came in.
So, four, all right, okay, so, let me, let me read these in and then we can figure out what's going on, so, this is from Brian Arnoff dated March 20th, 2023, this is a letter in support of the project, identifies himself as Brian Arnoff, he lives at 90 Maple in Beacon, and he owns Myers Old Dutch and the Kitchen Sink, he states that he's submitting a letter in support for the... he's submitting a letter in support for the approval of the low crescent variance. Myers Old Dutch property directly abuts the side of Five Willow and overlooks the barn to be renovated. This improvement to the current structure seems like it's a big win for everyone, including removing a dilapidated building and adding an additional apartment to Beacon's housing supply. I would also note, as their neighbor, I've gotten to know the Battersby family and their awesome local people, just trying to do their best for the community, and he hopes that they'll approve, will approve their requests. Then I have a letter from Lisa Arnoff, also dated March 20th, and she states, as property owners on the Main Street corridor, we want to applaud and support the Five Willow Street accessory, which is not a necessary, but a second, second main building apartment rehab and renovations. It seems this project will foster the Beacon residential community and will be a boon to the area. I have a third letter, also dated March 20th, from a Gabrielle Berger. So this was, I believe, the wife of, or partner, at least, of the person who spoke earlier. They just identified by themselves, and they own Nine Willow. It's basically a restatement of, of what you stated today, and then we received, let me find it.
Have a hear of the town.
Thanks, Montos. And we received, or Amanda received a correspondence dated May 13th from a Derek Adams, just stating, I received a letter regarding the application and the hearing for tonight. His house is in the next block over, so he doesn't say I'd be effective, affected by the, by the proposal. He does ask the following, could you tell me how the pros and cons of this variance would be granted? Okay, so it's more of a procedural question, or what the potential issues of the house, having one foot away from the property line, obviously we talked about that. If I live next door, I guess I might not want it. Well, the person that lived next door spoke to that. Do we know if our immediate neighbors oppose the project? I've seen the structure. It looks like it's about to collapse, so I'm all for having it renovated, but from a garage into a single-family home for that decision, he would defer to the city and to the neighbors to the right, which I guess is us and the person that's here. So, does the app, do the, do you want to speak, your RA, or, or the applicant want to speak to us moving forward this evening? Do you, do you feel as though, from the discussion back and forth, that you want to modify anything, ask for an adjournment, or would you prefer us to move along?
And, I'm sorry to cut you off, RA, you could also, we could also, you could make a motion to, to have our office prepare, if it's going toward a denial, prepare a denial resolution to be voted on at the next meeting. So I'm just stating the ways that this could proceed. I'm not, I'm not making any representation as to how the board's gonna vote. I have no idea how the board would vote, but if that's the case, too, you could have us prepare a denial resolution to be voted on at the next meeting. So it doesn't necessarily have to end in a vote today. There are, there are ways around it, but, RA, continue.
No, I think, I think we're, we're okay proceeding, and, and, you know, with the understanding that, that if you wanted to make a condition of that window, you know, then that, that window on the neighbor's side would come out and, and, and the parking, yeah.
Maybe the condition of the land banking for the project.
Yeah, if, if, if there's some way, you know, that, that, that we could work, work out the parking, so it doesn't have to be constructed immediately, or?
We would look into that. I know certain municipalities for large commercial projects, you know, require land banking, and you have to provide where it would show up on a plan, how you plan to maintain it, that you have to maintain it in the meantime. We would have to look into, to the best way to go about that, and maybe depicting it on a plan as well, so that, that you, you show where the cars can go.
Yeah, and, and, and if it, if it works that way, we could make it subject to, you know, demonstrating that we can provide the, the parking, you know, if, if, if the board's okay with not constructing it immediately.
That would solve one of the variances, or the concerns of the variance.
Right.
Does the board still feel as though we want to continue moving through the analysis this evening?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think we sort of think they want us to.
Okay, all right, so then, then we shall do what the majority of the board wishes. All right, so we'll go through each variance, and we will consider the five factors for each variance. So we'll take them in, in the order in which they're listed. So the first variance that we're considering, actually, I'm sorry, let me, let me do this first. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Uh, motion from Montos. Can I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Yay.
Okay, so we're, we are closed with one opposition. So again, we're gonna review these one by one. So this is going to be the balancing test for 223-12 dot A, which is for the allowance of one, more than one main building on the lot. So as to whether there'll be an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties that will be created by granting the area variance. So can we have some discussion regarding that factor on this variance, please?
Yeah, that's the big sticking point for me, is the, is the two main buildings. But to me, that's mitigated by the size of the lot, just what you had said. I mean, just looking at the location map, it's twice the size of all the other, you know, of, of most of the normal lots in Beacon. It's, it's a double lot, at least. So to me, that mitigates it.
I don't think it does. Allowing two main buildings on a single lot, I think sets a bad precedence. And I think that could be a detriment to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I would agree with that. To me, it is an undesirable change because of that precedence that it sets of two primary buildings on the one lot. So I, I do think it's, I'm sure cosmetically, ultimately, with the work, it would look pretty, but I think it's undesirable from that perspective, from the two primary buildings on the one lot.
Okay. As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible to the applicant to pursue that does not require this particular area variance?
So, if you want to speak to that.
Of course.
I can't speak factually. I can just speak from, I would be interested to see why as extending the existing structure to accommodate multifamily would meet the needs, and what that would mean from a variance need, if any, at all. So I do feel that there are other ways to achieve this. I am concerned, again, I am concerned about the, how subs, I'm kind of bleeding into the third one, how I see this as substantial. I am concerned about the side and rear yard setbacks of a living space, of continuing even if that does exist in some of the older structures in Beacon. I am concerned about that. The gentleman from the public raised a very good point. What happens if painting has to go, has to go on the other property potentially? So I guess I'm bleeding into the third one, but because I see it as, as substantial, and because I do believe that there's other options to pursue to achieve the desired end result, I'd have to say that it could potentially be achieved.
I, I have to agree that it seems that there's an obvious alternative path, which is to build an additional structure on the existing two-story building. And, and considering the, the condition of the, the barn, it's likely that it's gonna have to be completely rebuilt. I don't, so in terms of the financial hardship or whatever, it might wind up being exactly the same.
Yeah, so, so.
And they get to the same end result.
For the, financial hardship is not a consideration for an area variance. It is for a use variance. So I know that was brought up a few times.
Feasibility of other options is a, is a condition for the area variance, a consideration for the area variance.
So in theory, you could backdoor, you could backdoor cost into feasibility.
Yeah, but you do not have to show a financial, you know, the use variances, you have to prove that it's not gonna create any profit or whatever. Like, you have to balance money in, money out kind of thing. Finances could, you know, play a role in feasibility.
I was just agreeing with you.
Yeah, so again, I just want to reiterate, I go back, I, I would tend to believe that there is alternatives to mitigate the need for at least a couple of these variances.
Yeah, I, I was just looking at the, the available space in the backyard. I mean, if we were to comply with the setback requirement of 20 feet, we, we would have less than 20 feet to build out in front of a, a building with existing windows.
19.31, you'd have 19.31 feet.
Right, and, and to, to get a whole dwelling unit there, and then, you know, that would block existing windows on the back of the existing house. I mean, I, I think it would be very difficult to put an addition on that house to, and make it work as a...
Maybe something to look at. You could renovate the barn into a garage and not have any issues with parking then either as well.
Yeah, I just, I, I just think that the, what, what you'd have to manipulate in order to get a third, you know, dwelling in that existing house, even with an addition, and, and still have it comply with setbacks, I, I don't think that that would work very well.
I think the question is, in theory, right, RA, is, is, is that, are those variances much less substantial than the variances that you're seeking under this application? That was rhetorical. So, anyway, does anyone else want to speak to the second factor? Elaine?
I, Montos pretty much covered it.
Okay, and Judy?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Number three, as to whether the requested variances, variance is substantial.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I think we all would agree that it is a substantial variance.
1,040 square feet is...
Yeah, well, just making it, you know, to, just to allow, I mean, really, this variance is to allow more than one main building on a lot. That, that, really, we're, that is a substantial request. I think we could all agree to that.
Yeah.
Four, as to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Have some discussion on that, please.
I don't, I, I think it's gonna be an improvement. What I like about the property is that it's, it's like an original property from back in the day, and, and, you know, you build something else, you're never gonna get that kind of look again. I mean, it really has a special, special look. And it is, you know, and, and they do have enough square footage that it fits in the, in the law, right, for them to have this other square footage?
Yes.
Yes, so.
Density, the density rules.
Yeah, the density rules. So I, I think, given that it's such a unique property, and what our lawyer has pointed out, is that, yeah, I get it, that was my problem, was the, was the precedent of the two main properties, the two main dwellings on the one property. But what was explained to me was that they have enough square footage of lot in order to do this, where, you know, someone else on a smaller lot will not be able to, it won't be allowed. So I'm not that worried about it.
I think speaking to the precedent concern.
So I think it's gonna really make the neighborhood not, I, I think it's gonna be a great improvement to have that old building redone.
Uh, so I think, speaking to the precedent concern, it would be very, a very unique, this is a very unique setup, right? So you need the lot size, you need an existing structure that exists, and you need to be in this zone, and you need to have a two-family house. It's just, you know, how many? How many?
Do you really need to be in this zone?
Well, you need...
There are, there are other areas where two-family homes are pre-existing.
Sure, but you need to have the use, right? So.
I don't understand. You could be in a residential neighborhood and have a two-family house.
Yeah.
And want to add an ADU, but you have a two-family house, so it's not permitted under the ADU law, so you could apply to put a second main building on your lot.
You could.
So it would be a precedence.
Yeah.
But, but he's making the point that in this transition zone, it's allowed to have another building with another use. That's what he said.
But not a residential and not a primary.
Right, right, but I'm saying, it, this zone does allow other uses for secondary buildings. That's all it's...
But they're not asking for any of those uses.
So I, my point is, though, is that it, it is a unique ask, because, again, you need, you need to have, I mean, if you want to throw out the use, right, because you're gonna, the argument, I guess, is, is that, well, most zones have residential dwelling as a use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we can throw that out, but then you still need the size, you still need the existing structure. So I think that that's the main one, right? It's like, how many, how many lots in Beacon have the size and then the existing structure? Are we gonna have people line up for, and say, oh, well, we want to do what is being proposed here? There's nothing there. I, I don't think we're setting a precedent there. And, and also we're considering this application as, as, you know, on this particular, on this particular lot. I, I don't think, when you do that, and when you, and when you develop a record like we are currently, I don't, I don't really think it is precedent-setting. I'm not, I'm not concerned about setting a precedent, because I don't, I think that each, each lot is unique, and I think that we are identifying the different unique aspects of this lot in our discussion, whereby, you know, if applicant Z, you know, comes next year, we can differentiate that. That's not to say that I'm not concerned about the application in, you know, the factors, however, just speaking to the precedent setting that has been discussed. As far as factor four, I believe Judy was the only one to speak to that so far. Anyone else wish to speak on the adverse physical or environmental conditions?
This is only in regards to having two main buildings on one lot.
For now, yes, correct.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see how it would change anything from what's there today.
Yeah, yeah, and that one, I think that that's a positive for the applicant, just, just the overall project would, I think, improve, in theory, the aesthetic. And then number five, as to the, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, can we have a discussion on that?
Yes.
Absolutely. I, I just giggle because we have this discussion that we need to enjoy and educate as to how everything's all self-created.
And, and obviously, keep in mind, with self-created, it's relevant to the decision, but it's not necessarily to preclude the granting of a variance.
Yeah, to speak, when was the zone created? Do we know?
Bruce, do you know?
Transition zone, that was, that was after the last comprehensive plan, wasn't it?
Was it?
No, it was after that.
When was the zone created?
Yeah.
I want to say it was probably done, are there two or three years ago?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and take a look.
What was the previous zone?
Parking.
Yeah, that I'm not, that I'm not sure. I'd have to go back.
Yeah, it was a parking business.
Parking.
And was the property acquired by the current owner, or I guess, was this, was this, was this always, was this always in your family?
Yeah, for about 20 years.
Okay, yeah, all right, okay. You get, yeah, okay, right. This use was not permitted under the previous zone, correct?
In the previous zone, probably not.
Okay, yeah, all right. So I think it was self-created, okay. You have enough notes on that, I assume, on the first? Yeah, okay. As to, as to the second variance, we are now going to discuss 223-17 point D, which is the one-foot side yard setback. I, I think maybe we could discuss the two setbacks together rather than do this twice.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So we'll consider the two 17 dot Ds, so the one side yard setback where 10 feet is required, and the 1.8 foot requested rear yard setback where 20 feet is required. So can we have some discussion on factor one, again, which is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties?
No, because it's already existing. It's in there. No, because it's already existing, it's an area.
Yeah, they've been living with it.
That's all I have to say on it.
They've been living with it for a long time, and everybody...
I would disagree with that because of the fact that the building is going to be as a primary residence, as opposed to a barn today. Pick your part.
As opposed to an eyesore?
As opposed to a barn today.
I don't hear you.
I just, I, it's not a major concern, but I don't understand how you maintain anything that grows in that one foot and 1.8 feet.
There's no, no, there's no difference.
I was going to say, is that, is there, is there a difference?
They still have to paint it, man.
No.
They still, you know, grass has to be cut, he's probably got to...
But it was pre-existing before, now we're allowing it again.
Well, I guess, the way it's worded, right, is, will there be an undesirable change?
Yeah.
So, what is changing, you know, in theory is, well, with regards to the setbacks, there is no change, but with regards to the use, there will be humans, you know, in theory occupying it, where there was not humans occupying it before. So, I guess it speaks to the concern of the gentleman that spoke with regard to, you know, having, there's going to be humans in the, in the structure with the ability, if there are, you know, windows to...
Right.
You know, that's why, that's why there's setbacks, right?
We heard it from the public.
Sure. So, I think, you know, that, that's, that's the answer in theory, or at least in my opinion. Factor two, as to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue, speaking, again, to the, to the setbacks.
So, I go back to my comments earlier, I think there are potentially other options to explore, to achieve the end state, that wouldn't require those variances.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just, just from a brief look and...
If they require variances, they would be of less substance.
Yeah, I mean, just, just looking at the, you know, the layout back there, it would mean doing it, doing some kind of addition in the backyard, which would start encroaching on the, on the setback there, and it also, you know, interferes with windows that are existing in the house.
Right.
Yes, I, I just think, I understand what you're, what you're saying, that there's a potential there, but, but just, you know, knowing the property and the house a little bit, it's, I think it would be very difficult to do that.
Anyone else want to speak to that factor?
Well, I mean, the thing that's been said about, you know, increasing, making it a three-family house instead of a two-family house, that's one of the ideas that came out. To me, that seems much more substantial than, than renovating and restoring an existing structure and an existing footprint. So, that's my, that's my comment on that.
I just have a sort of observation that we haven't mentioned before, which is, it doesn't have to be, this new building doesn't have to be, I mean, this renovated building does not have to sit exactly the footprint it is now. I mean, nominally, there's an existing building, and nominally, you're going to reuse the beams and the roof or whatever. But in principle, you wouldn't have to, you could move it four feet or five feet away from the lot lines and potentially ask for a different variance, even if you were going to make the house of the same size as a secondary housing unit on the property. And so, that would be something that could be done to, you know, minimize some of this encroachment on people's neighbors' properties.
So, I guess, REA, I guess the question there is, is it feasible from a, just, construction, engineering, architectural possibility? Is it feasible to move the structure, or is the structure where it is?
I mean, I don't think we could move that structure.
Right.
Yeah, it would sort of have to be reinforced in place in, in order to be successful as a reconstruction project. I mean, I know there's such a thing as picking up a building and moving it, but I don't think this would withstand that.
Right, but a new building, I mean, forget the existing building from then, you could put a new building anywhere on the lot and ask for a variance based on where it sits.
Yes, but...
It's just another alternative.
Well, I think that then that opens up a can of worms, right? That, that's the, that is what I was speaking to before. If, if there was nothing there, I think I would, and I think, I'm getting the feeling that most people would on the board, view this as a different application if there was not already an existing, somewhat historic, structure there. So, there were, I think, the applicant is relying on that to push the application forward. So, you can't, I think, you can't rely on that to push it forward, but then also, you have to live with that as well. You can't then say, oh, well, you know, it exists, but then we can move it if we build a new one. Well, then you lose the fact that it exists.
It's also feasibility, right? Feasible and possible aren't necessarily the same thing.
Synonymous, yeah, mm-hmm, okay. As to whether the requested variances are substantial?
Yes.
Yes.
I just don't see it as substantial. It's an existing building with existing non-conforming setbacks, and we deal with them all the time.
I guess I buy the idea that if you're going to keep the building as is, everyone's used to it, it's been there for 20 years, you know? The fundamental questions are the ones that we're talking about, it's not this one-foot setback.
I think, yeah, I think...
And it, just, just to add something that's probably unrelated, I'm sorry, Jordan. Like, the, the being able to get rental income from this property probably is how you're able to afford to do the renovation.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, that's my comment, that doesn't really have to do with probably what you're asking, but I wanted to get it out there.
I think that the setbacks are substantial because the use changes from a barn, and so, the neighbors being used to a barn, whether it be dilapidated or whether it be in use, is different than a living dwelling unit where people are using as their domicile. And so, I think that that is a substantial, it's just, it's just a different, it's a different type of use of that, of that property, and therefore, it's a different request.
Is that, is that related to the, the one-foot setback?
Sure, I think, so I think that, I think, in my opinion, I think that if someone was to put, you know, a shed is different than a garage, and it's different from a bedroom. And so, that, that's where, whereas in other applications, you know, we say, oh, well, it's in the, it's in the same footprint. You know, we say that all the time, but the use, you know, a lot of the time, already is dwelling in that footprint, and then they're just creating more dwellings. So, it's, it's not really, you know, somebody could go look out the window that already exists in this, you know, hypothetical example that we've done in the past, and there's just going to be, you know, something else there that also, you know, someone is already in and can dwell in. I think that it changes when the use changes.
And to that extent, sorry to cut you off.
Sure.
Substantiality isn't necessarily only measured in numerical means, so, Jordan, your analysis is very valid in that respect.
Why, thank you. Factor four, as to whether the proposed variances will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district.
Physical, potentially, environmentally, probably not. Physically, for exactly what you just stated, which is the point I was also trying to get across, so, physically, I think so. Environmentally, nothing's evident to me that it would be a yes on that.
Yeah, there's something sitting there already with those setbacks, I don't think it would have an adverse effect.
Yeah, to me, this is the least, the least offensive of the four, of the five factors. I think that, you know, what's there is there, what's going to be there, what's proposed to be there is an improvement physically, and, you know, in theory, possibly even environmentally.
Yeah.
Cool, all right. And then, as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure, okay. And then, discussion on 223-26 dot F, which is for the allowance of three parking spaces where six parking spaces, two per dwelling unit, is required. We'll go back to the first factor, which is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
Yes, that, that area, and especially that end of the block, has a lot of parking, especially on weekends. Throwing three extra cars out into those, and in the winter, when you cannot park in the streets in Beacon, you have to figure out where to put those other three cars. Currently, they may not need them, but you can't guarantee that in the future, those conditions are going to stay the same, say they sell the property, or move out.
Yeah, I would capitalize on, you said earlier about the landhold, right, and putting that as a condition. If we were to grant that, right, and that is, if they needed, they could block top some more.
They'd block the space.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be...
That would be a criteria needed that we would put, if, if that were granted.
Yeah, if they didn't have the area, I agree with you completely, if they didn't have the area, then that would be a big problem.
Yeah, then I would absolutely agree with you.
But they do have the area.
What kicks in? Yeah, I was going to ask that, what is the, so, what is the mechanism of land banking? And I guess, you know, either, if you want, Bruce, if you want to speak to that, what, so, if we, if we grant this variance with that condition, that there's a land, a land bank, what activates that?
So, usually, the planning board uses that for, so that people aren't overbuilding parking lots. So, the applicant would offer up land banking, X number of parking spaces. For some reason, you know, after the building's been in use for a period of time, and, you know, the parking lot, you know, is basically overflowing, you have people that are parking in the grass, parking wherever, at that point, I believe, you know, the applicant would be required to build out those parking spaces in order to fulfill the needs of the building.
So, here, there's real, obviously, this is, you know, a much different thing, this is a residential use, so it would, I guess it would be your office's determination that, you know, what would it be, complaints?
Yes, I guess it would, I'll refer this to, to our attorney, but I believe the resolution could be written so that if there is a future need for parking, that it could be enforced by the, by the building department office to require them to build out those parking spaces, so that there's not a, you know, an on-street parking issue.
Correct, the way, the way I envision it, the resolution would include it, REA, you would be able to revise the drawings that indicate where three parking spots exist, so that we can confirm that they do, it is feasible. And then, the building department's determination in the future, whether it's based on, on need in the neighborhood or whatever the case may be.
And then, just as far as enforcement goes, let's say, you know, it's determined that that is a need, you send a letter to the owner and say, you have to build the parking spaces, and they say, we don't have any money to build the parking spaces, or they don't respond, what is your, your actionist, then cite them and bring them to court at that point?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd give them a, an order to remedy based upon the resolution. If they don't meet the requirements within the time, then I would cite them, issue an appearance ticket for them to go to court, and we would discuss it with the judge.
Sure.
How do you determine if there's a parking problem that occurs because of this, that it's cars from this lot and not cars from another?
That would be difficult, we have to narrow it down, I guess, to it being specific to that property. But it would be based upon investigations of complaints from the neighbors. If the neighbors, you know, it's going on, we can investigate it, or if, for some reason, the police department may, because there may be an issue with, you know, parking on the street during the winter months.
Bruce, do you feel as though that condition puts an undue burden on your office to enforce a condition that may be normally beyond your scope?
It could be difficult, yes.
So, I would ask it this way, do you think land banking makes sense for a residential as opposed to how it makes sense on the commercial side?
It's hard to tell with, you know, most of the time, the land bank is because you want to try to keep more green space or impervious surface, you want less than the amount of impervious surface, without all the details of, you know, having a, some type of a plan to show where all the water's going to go. Because again, you know, you don't want to have water running off onto the neighbor's property, because that would create a, another issue.
This is a gravel driveway now.
I think we're talking about the, the space to the right of the driveway, right? So, the current driveway...
Right, but I'm saying, right now, it's all gravel, it's, it is permeable.
So, it's also, it's all being proposed as gravel?
If, if they were going to put more, and they could put more gravel...
So, then, if it's all gravel, then it wouldn't be an issue at all.
And do you know if we granted land banking to other residential?
Not at the zoning board level.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just using that phrase.
The planning board has a multi-family, that, that I'm aware of. There's a couple of projects, actually, that are in front of them now, that they've talked about land banking, but those are more for, like, the apartment buildings, where the numbers are very hard to, to balance out, because it's, you know, based upon, you know, the dwelling units or the number of bedrooms.
Got it.
Sorry.
And I'm, I'm not sure what the mechanism for that would be, I threw out that phrase, because I'm familiar with it from the
sure.
Planning board side, but it, it's, that's sort of an idea.
You know, we grew up, we all want to be on the planning board, REA.
Yeah, so, in terms of the phrase, land banking, that, that is thrown around a lot, usually in the commercial context. If it were to be approved tonight, and the condition is for parking, it could be conditioned on the provision of three spots to be, you know, dedicated in the future, when the building department notices. Doesn't necessarily have to be quote-unquote "land banking." If you Google "land banking" and see what it gives you, it might say that it has to involve some sort of construction or some sort of landscaping, whatever, I'm not sure. But, you know, if we're concerned with the actual proper phrase of land banking, we could condition it on the ability to provide and the necessity to provide upon the building department's determination, the three additional spaces.
What about if we just don't grant that part of the variance? What if we deny that, that you need the six spaces, and they've got the space for it?
Sure, then they'd be, then they'd be forced to make the spaces, right?
Would they be forced to build the spaces? I mean, couldn't they just build three instead of six, as long as they have the area for the six? And they don't, no? It has to be done?
Then, Bruce can immediately cite them, right?
And I think, and if I understood correctly, there is the, if that's the case, there is the ability to actually provide it from the beginning, the six spaces, if I understood correctly.
Yeah, if, if it's necessary and...
So, I think that's the discussion, right? And I think that speaks to factor two, which is an awesome segue into whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue. And so, you know, I would say that, that the other, you know, the other method would be to turn the
The side.
The side into a driveway. And so, the question, you know, we have to weigh is, is the detriment of turning that into a driveway greater or less than the benefit of taking three cars off, you know, potentially three cars off the road? And so, you know, that, that, I think, anyway, is going to be what turns my vote on, on the whole variance, really.
I think requiring from the get-go that they provide the three spots, especially if it's gravel, so it's permeable, is preferable than doing some kind of retroactive land banking and giving the building department more work in terms of tracking down a minor issue.
Yeah, you know, I, I think, you know, after fleshing it out, I think that it is simpler to just require the parking spaces based on the fact that they have the land there to provide the parking spaces. I think that while we do want to be, you know, ecologically conscious, the green space that is there is, you know, it's grass. I mean, you know, we're not asking them to cut down 100-year-old trees, or, or any trees, other than a bush. I think that the burden that we'd be putting on the building department is, you know, again, adding
Complications.
To Bruce's already...
Hectic.
Hecti, right. And there's a benefit to getting, you know... And there's a benefit to getting, you know, we, as we all know, you know, there's always complaints about parking. So I think, you know, taking three cars off, off the street, potentially three cars off the street outweighs the, the keeping of the green space. So anyway, I think that there is another method feasible. I think that that's, that's proven by what we just fleshed out.
Just one question with that, would they need another curb cut at the end of that side driveway?
They might have to widen it, yes.
So, and about how much would that be? Would that eliminate more parking on that street?
Uh, Bruce, sorry, I, I think we could do it because we're staying behind the front of the house, so there's some maneuvering room.
Okay, so you just have the one coming in and be able to, as you go into the property, widen it up to two car, two doors.
Yeah, yeah, because it...
So then it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect anything on the street?
No.
Okay, to that, yeah.
And to that extent, if, if this is the, the way the board would like to proceed, because there is a lot of discussion, there are a lot of variances, it might make sense to have the, I know another month, you know, time, time is money and it takes time, it might be cleaner to come back with the drawing depicting the changes and then, you know, if there's public comment at that point, there's public comment at that point, but then we can sort of view the application without thinking about the parking, it's already been provided. If the idea is to remove a window, we've addressed that comment, so now it's all done and it's a bit cleaner, if, if that's the method.
Sure, so I think what I'd like to do procedurally is just finish the analysis on the five factors for this variance and then kind of go that direction. So let, let's just, just finish the analysis, yeah. So as to whether the variance requested is substantial?
Yes, three parking spaces.
We're talking about the parking now?
Yes.
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 Yeah, I think, you know, there's no way to argue. It's, it's not, right? As to whether the proposed variances will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district?
Yes.
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 Yeah, I think, again, parking is, is a major hot, you know, button topic in this city and, you know, in theory, three more cars on the street, yes. And as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. So I will ask the applicant if your preference is to redraw plans based on the feedback you received today, or if you would prefer us to vote on the variances as submitted.
All four variances, not...
Individually or altogether?
You, you could grant one and deny two or whatever.
I think we would have, I think we would take action either, either yea or nay on all, on each one, or we're not going to table one and not, yeah, not the other.
Yes, right.
So...
So if, I mean, let's say the fourth one about the parking was denied and...
The other three were yes, right?
Yeah, if, if the other three, then we just act on that, right, and, and update our drawings for the record and, you know, take, take the window out, add the parking back in.
Yeah, so, well, I don't want to answer for, but what I think would happen is yes. So if you got three yes, if you got one, two, three as yays, and then the fourth as a nay, then what would happen?
At that point, if there was no actual provision of the three spaces, then Bruce could step in. If there is a provision of the three spaces, you are compliant with the, the zoning code, so there's no need for Bruce to step in, there's no need for you to be before the board for a variance for those parking spaces because you are providing them.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't, I don't know if it makes it cleaner, but we, we could submit, you know, the final drawings for the record that reflect any conditions.
And the approval could be conditioned on updated drawings depicting the gravel driveway, depicting the removal of the window on the stairs or raising it up or making it smaller or whatever, condition the board thinks appropriate. But it's, I believe the board is saying it's up to you two, how you would like to proceed, if you would like a vote tonight.
I, I think those, those items, you know, the, the window in, in the stair, we know that can be removed cleanly, so, you know, that, that's really not an issue that we, we would need to come back for, and, and the parking, you know, the applicant's fine putting the six spaces in, so, you know, I think, I think that cleans up those two concerns.
Sure. And then I guess I'll ask the board, would, is the board's preference to vote on the variances tonight, or would the board rather see an update visually based on the discussion today, next month?
And it's not only see an update visually, it's you guys have more opportunity to sort of digest this, ask whatever question it is, if there's public comment again next month.
And we could, we could also view your write-up of what?
Yeah.
The resolution, right, and, and discuss that as well.
We can do it that way as well.
I mean, I personally have no preference. I'm prepared tonight, I'm prepared next month, whatever. What I want to do, I have no preference.
Prefer to wait till next month, but...
So the more that I think about it and, and despite what the applicant has indicated, I, I think that seeing it visually on plans, I think reading it based on the resolution that will be written by our attorney to see, you know, what his interpretation of what we have discussed are all additional tools that we'll have when voting, because I, I get the sense that this is probably going to be a close vote, and I think that it might be important to take the time to really, you know, digest it, certainly for me personally. And I think I might, yeah, anyway. Yeah, so I think we should put it off to next month, and before I ask for motion to do that or not, I guess my question is, so procedurally, if they return with a different set of plans, we've closed the public hearing.
Reopen.
So we reopen, we would reopen it, okay.
Reopen.
Yeah, we want the, the public to be able to comment on...
Of course.
The new submission.
No matter how minimal the change is, the public has the right to make that, so we would reopen the public hearing.
Renote it?
If, yeah, it would be renoticed. If, if it's open for two minutes, it's open for two minutes, if it's open for two hours, it's open for two hours. But any changes, the public has the right to, to...
Okay. So that's what I would like to do, but I will, I will defer to the majority of the board as to whether we're going to vote, act on these tonight or not, so...
What does the applicant want?
Well, the applicant wants us to act tonight, I think, that's what they've stated, right? So that would be their preference. So we've got, I believe Elaine would like to wait, Montos?
Aye. Can go either way.
So I, I would like to wait. Judy?
I'd rather go.
Rather go and...
I'd like to wait.
Okay, so we will, we will, we will wait.
Motion, we need a motion.
Yes, right, so can I, can I have a, can I have a motion to, what am I asking for motion for?
Yeah, so it would be to adjourn and to continue the public hearing to next month.
Well, we've already closed the public hearing, right? So I, I guess, yeah.
Make a motion to reopen and then continue to next month.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's do that. Can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Motion. Stereo.
Same time, right? We'll say Judy, can I have a second?
Second.
From Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, can I have a motion to adjourn the pub, the now reopened public hearing until the June meeting of the zoning board, please?
Motion.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for understanding our process.
Does that have to be renoticed now that the public hearings will open?
I think it probably will, but I'll get, I'll reach out and, and let you know, we'll confirm.
All right.
Thanks, REA.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
See you next month. See you next month, thank you so much.
Uh, can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number two, please?
Motion open.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You didn't run away after that.
Oh, I'm going to need glasses. I'm sorry, when, when you show those, could you move them further up here because there is no way?
Well, we have them right here.
We have them.
Yeah, I know. I'd like at least a shot.
We're here for, my name is Jason Lichwin, the architect for the project. We're here simply for a area variance because we have a pre-existing non-conforming setback of 4.8 feet. Where the current house is a Cape Cod-style house, so it's one and a half stories, which anybody familiar with the Cape Cod knows, the second story is very low and the sidewalls come in. We're just looking to take the back of the house and add a full shed dormer to increase that ceiling height, and there's a little bump out on the side here where we have the kitchen on this side. While we're doing, we're going to straight up on that, add a bathroom for the second story, for the, or second floor that's already there. We're not increasing the non-conformity, the roof height is going to remain the same as it is already.
Bless you.
And, you know, the only thing we need is the variance because we already have that non-conforming issue of the setback.
I should state, for the record, before we proceed with any questions from the board, the, for clarification, on the agenda, there are two sections for relief, 223-10.D and 17.D is the schedule of dimensional regulations, that's the, you know, for the setback. 223-10.D, it becomes really annuity, if you grant the setback, the, that's more of a, it just says that you can not be non-conforming in something other than use, which is the case here, but if you grant the variance for the setback from 223-17, you're no longer non-conforming. So I just wanted to clarify that in case someone saw or the applicant saw that, that other section and was asking what, what it's for. It's, it's really annuity, it's an overshoot, but the 17.D is really the, the dimensional regulations are what the variance would be from.
Yep.
Any questions from the board to the applicant's representation?
Is any part of the addition going to be further, add the footprint of the original house?
Nope, staying within, yep, all within an existing footprint.
I have no questions.
I have no questions on that.
That is my question.
Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing on agenda item number two.
Motion to close.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And so now, we'll go through the factors again for this, variance request. So here, the applicant is seeking relief, they're asking for a 4.8 side yard setback where a 10-foot setback is required, and we'll go through the factors again as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance?
No.
No.
I, it'll fit right in.
No, I think that it will be the same.
Especially since it's off the back. We're not even noticing it or not.
Um, as to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance?
No, because it's pre-existing, right? Just not do it.
No.
No.
No. Uh, as to whether the requested variance is substantial?
Not substantial, maybe.
Over half, but considering it's not changing the footprint, no.
Yeah, I think this is one where we've said, you know, many times in the past, mathematically, it may be substantial, but in you, in practicality, it's not based on the fact that the footprint is there. Four, as to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact, I'm sorry, adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district?
No.
I don't think it will have any effect. And as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yeah.
Yes. And then I'll ask the applicant, excuse me.
Maybe in the case of, well, pre-existing, maybe it isn't self-created because it's already there.
Yeah, that's right.
No.
Yeah, I know, I can try it, but it doesn't, it doesn't...
We'll, we'll get one eventually, Judy, for you. I just want to, want to ask the applicant, we normally, just our general conditions is that all fees to the city are paid prior to the issuance, and then also will you be able to obtain a building permit within the next six months and then, and then also commence construction within the next six months, and then complete and obtain a C of O within two years of tonight, is that...
Yes, so we have the application into Bruce already, and we are planning to have the construction by the, done by the end of September because my client is due in the end of October, so...
Congratulations.
So you're under, we're on a timeline. You're under the gun. All right, very good. So I will ask for a motion.
Before that, just, just to get into the good habit, the board finds that the requested variance is or is not the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community?
Yes.
Yes, it's the minimum.
Okay, just to get into the good habit.
Yeah, sure. And can I have a motion, one way or the other, please?
Motion.
Motion?
Uh, yeah, you said that as a question, but yes.
No, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Motion to grant the variance by Judy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Montos, and then we'll just roll call it. Stowe?
Yes.
Yes, Judy?
Yes.
Uh, Montos?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the May meeting of the zoning board.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it and everything.
Thanks for talking.